Thank you very much for joining us this morning for our city council study session, work session. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the room?
Patterson, Bray.
Here.
Tatum.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Cortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Here.
Blatt?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is a Human Relations Advisory Board Committee update. Representatives from the Human Relations Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. There.
Here?
Yep.
Okay. Thanks for having me. My name is Jenna Thompson, and I'm the chair of the Human Relations Advisory Committee. So I was just going to discuss our current goals right now would be generally to provide resources and education to the community about issues of human rights. We're kind of working on discovering some projects where we can do that. And then additionally, to provide a forum where people can come and discuss issues that they're facing. And so in doing that, one of the main things that we're working on right now are finding ways to support the Welcoming City Resolution that was passed last October. So finding some actionable ways to be able to provide outreach, let people know that this is, you know, something that the city supports, finding safe spaces for people within the city of Pocatello, and then providing education. It's been a little sticky with COVID, being able to do like cold events and things like that, as everybody is super aware of. But we might be looking into like some virtual events, creating like a resource repository that people can access. And then additionally, finding, expanding ways that people can report concerns to the city so the city can be aware of what's going on within the city of Pocatello and understand like where it is appropriate to take action. So it is now available for people to submit either anonymously or otherwise on this, on the website, the Human Relation Advisory Committee's website. So they can go on there and submit via form. It's been like a hotline has been available for years, but just moving forward with the times, people can now submit via an online form. And then finally, we're working with the planning and development department to help sort of diversify the voices that are heard within the comprehensive plan that's going on. So that will be through participation in some focus groups and then providing like some sort of consultation to that department as well. That's all for me. Thank you so much for having me.
So Jenna, just a minute, we have a question here.
Sure.
And here.
Have members of the community brought you any issues of concern?
So we had one, and then the form was just put back up last week. So it's very, it's very new. Prior to that, we had one, and that was during the, that promposal issue up at Highland. That's the one that we had seen most recently. Yeah. Prior to that, though, it was just that, like I said, the hotline was available, and I don't think anybody knew about it. So I would say it was almost none at that point. So we'll see what's out there.
Thank you.
We got Linda, then Roger.
I wanted to just thank you for your work that you're doing. Two things that you just said that I really liked to hear is that making it easier for people to come to you or find you and report things and express concerns. So I like that you're looking for ways to sort of make people able to find you more easily. The other part is participation in the comp plan, I think, is tremendous. So thank you for doing that. It's really good. We want that plan to be, you know, a living usable document and not just something that goes on the shelf. So I think that using that as a way to make us better and more diverse and more inclusive is a, is a great idea. So, thank you. Yeah.
Roger.
Have you sought any media exposure, like PSAs or anything like that?
Yes, that's something that has been in the development currently. Mr. McDougall is working on, and it sounds like the mayor is willing to be the voice on like radio stations for, for that as well. So yeah, so we're trying to reach out to different groups so that they know, like the NAACP is aware that this is a possibility and just reaching out to some different groups, kind of building some partnerships within the city of Pocatello.
Counsel, I can say this committee's been very actively involved in community events to get out in front of the community and try to let them know that they're there. They're spending a lot of time doing that, whether, you know, in just different, with COVID, obviously, there was very few, but since they've, we've opened some things up, this committee's been very active in, in getting in front of the community and the people so that they understand the process, and they're, they've been working the process pretty, pretty good. So it's exciting to see where we are right now.
Yeah, I have to say, like, people I've talked to thus far have been exciting, you know, people who are in more vulnerable groups, just to know that the city cares about them really means a lot because I think that sometimes, you know, you feel like an institution is too big to be able to like support you. And so to know that there's the Welcoming City Resolution and there is a way to be able to like voice your concern if you have one, it really means a lot to people.
That is good. Jenna, thank you. Thank you for all the time you spend with the committee, and thank you very much for being with us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to item three is a Golf Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Golf Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Larry Morton. I chair the Golf Advisory Board. Other committee members are Vice Chair Billy Satterfield, Ginger Smith, Danielle Mayby, Roger Musser, Thomas Little, Greg Albright for golf. Additional for golf representatives Gerald Myler and Brian Sprague. Also, I'd like to thank Councilman Bray, our city council liaison, for his participation and support with the committee. The Golf Advisory Committee continues to be very active, working with the golf concessionaire and city staff regarding the appearance and condition of the golf courses and the quality of the golfing experience for the community, as well as strategies to increase play at both courses. On behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for your past support and your current support in this fiscal year, particularly for your approval of capital resources to continue accumulation of funds for the eventual Riverside Clubhouse replacement and other ongoing needs at the golf course. Some recent accomplishments at the golf courses over the past couple of years, we've put in new yardage markers at both courses and are continuing to expand the markers, extensive tree pruning at both golf courses as well as select tree removals. We've done cart path renovations and replacements, some needed plumbing and electrical repairs at both clubhouses. Highland Clubhouse has been repainted, clubhouse flooring replacements at both clubhouses, replacement of AC units in both clubhouses, and addressing water hammer issues at Riverside Golf Course. Excuse me. As a play report for the 2020 season, total rounds played were 60,353 as compared to 2019, 49,278, and then 18,51,595. So rounds were up a bit last year. Season pass holders accounted for approximately 62% of the total rounds played in 2020, with daily fee rounds making up the remaining 38%. 2020 total season passes were 669 compared to 2019 at 654. Year-to-date in 2021, ongoing COVID circumstances continue to create challenges for 2021. However, play levels have been consistently good. Tournament participation has been good, and league play is also going very well. Through July 2021, year-to-date total rounds of 37,191, and the same period in 2020 was 36,561, and 2019, 30,432. Through July 2021, year-to-date passes are 630 compared to 632 last year, and 605 in 2019. Both courses also provide extensive support to the high school teams as well as golf, high school golf teams. At no cost, they play practice and match play during the months of March and May, March through May. Like Greg Albright, our concessionaire, to talk a little bit about strategies for increased play.
We're talking to Sandra.
You can sit and, you're fine.
My name's Greg Albright. I'm with For Golf, and some of the strategies that we've been planning, we've created a couple of new passes. We started those in 2018, and it was a family pass that was for husband, wife, and all children, 18 and younger, living in the same household. We started out from zero, and this year we've sold 17 of those. We also created a husband and wife senior pass, trying to reduce the fees for fixed incomes, and that again went from zero, and this year we sold 43 of those. So we still have some slow time, Monday through Thursday, 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock or so. So we still try to promote those tee times, whether it be on our eClub, through our website. We've got high school schools through their football programs or whatever, selling the booklets. We're doing discounted rounds through that as well, along with through the PGA America. Like Larry was talking about, our participation has been really good. Our tournament participation has been up, our league play has been good, and we provide leagues to all varieties from kids up to seniors, all through the course of the week. They all have a designated day that they participate from course to course. They alternate between Highland and Riverside. I think, I think that's about it. If there's any other questions, I can answer when Larry's done giving his presentation.
Okay. Larry, go ahead and finish up, and then I got Rick with the first question.
Some future golf needs, everybody's favorite topic. Committee members are aware that the city council continues to face budget challenges with many competing needs for services. There are requests for funding in the fiscal year 2022 for the Golf CIP fund budget in the amount of $50,000 for ongoing golf course and clubhouse needs, and continued savings and accumulating, accumulating resources for the replacement of the Riverside Clubhouse, which is our most pressing current need on the golf courses. Other course needs to keep in mind and to plan for long term, the Riverside number 17 pond overflow issues were, were in talks now in ways to address that overflow issue through enforcement and removal issues at both golf courses. The irrigation infrastructure replacement, this is, this is a big one coming up long term. Both golf courses, the infrastructure, the delivery pipe of wiring have been in place since 1987, about 30-plus years in the early 90s at Riverside. Concessionaire and city, or city are managing the breakage and wear issues, and the systems are performing well for their age. However, due to irrigation system life expectancy of approximately 30 years, and that's per Greg Baer, the land group, in 2011 analysis of the Highland system, it would be prudent for the city to plan for these eventual long-term needs. At the beginning of the presentation, council was provided with some financial information that summarizes total golf revenues for the city for 2020 season as well as revenues and expenditures in the golf course fund over the past five years. The current market-based golf concessionaire agreement terms were designed to achieve, maintain the goal of a three-legged stool operational philosophy in which financial terms and conditions are mutually beneficial to the golfing community, the city, and For Golf. Total 2020 season revenues for the city, to the city generated by the golf concession agreement were $325,533, and they consist of $126,767 to the Recreation Fund and Fund 78 Capital Need Resources. Accumulation revenues, 142,949, Water Department revenues, and annual pass, daily round CIP pass through fees were $55,817. As you can see in the chart that you were given, golf course revenue versus expenditure figures for the past five seasons, Golf and Pocatello has contributed over $480,000 to a combination of Recreation Fund, Fund 78, Capital Need Resources, and accumulation over that period. And I won't go through the, through the chart you have in front of you, but $480,000 plus over five years from the golf course. Standard revenues both from these city assets is both put back into the courses and also helps fund city recreation, which the golfers are happy to help with. Some additional economic benefits of the golf courses for the city, dollars spent by golfers from out-of-town visitors are critical since they bring in money that would otherwise be spent, not otherwise be spent in the local economy. Often out-of-town golfers will expend dollars not only on the courses themselves, but on restaurants and other retail items, gasoline while they're in town. Golf courses help to attract higher spending groups to the local community. Another valuable area where golf courses assist the community is increased property values on or near the golf courses, where home buyers value the open space and views and natural beauty when making home buying decisions. These factors causing golf course properties to tend to appreciate at a higher rate than some areas. And they can, we can also help attract new businesses to the community, as do all recreational facilities. In conclusion, as stated earlier, the Golf Advisory Committee considers the golf courses a significant asset to the city and believe that they provide quality recreation and have a very positive economic impact on overall parks and recreation department operations. On behalf of myself and other committee members, I would again like to thank the mayor and council members for your support of Golf and Pocatello. We have two excellent golf courses and an effective market-based golf concessions agreement, and the golf concessionaire city staff who care deeply about the courses and golfers who use them. If there are any questions?
We got one by Rick.
We got three.
We got three by Rick.
Is the 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock slow time, is that traditional in golf in the afternoon or is it caused by the heat we've had this year?
I think a little of both. I think with the heat, a lot of our golfers are trying to get out early in the morning. But it's notoriously always kind of been a slower time. You know, it used to be a slow time starting around 11:00, but we've increased play that now it's, that 11:00 is now 1:00. So we are getting some more participation out there.
I know you had to remove a bunch of trees because they died or they fell down. Do we need to worry about replacing trees on the courses?
Good question. You know, kind of aesthetics, it looks nice when those open holes are filled in with another tree. Along with trees is also maintenance, too. So it's a good question. I mean, we've, we've done a really good job of trimming the trees so that like when we had this recent storm, it would have been a disaster out there. It would have taken my maintenance crew days to clean all that up, and now it was a matter of a half a day to clean it up, where we got all the dead wood out. And Brett and his crew have been wonderful to work with in coming out and helping us with some different tree issues that we don't have the equipment to do. So they've been great with helping us now.
Rick, I've, I've found a number of trees, when I go golfing up there, I find a number of them that we could remove. It'd be perfectly okay with me.
Put some dunes in the side.
That's right.
I have a couple of favorites that we can. We did, we had a study done several years ago, and the recommendation at Riverside was to remove every other tree. So there are places where we have too many trees. The wind has been assisting in some of that, but at Riverside, it creates shade issues on the fairways and the greens and restricts growth. That's why that recommendation was made. A really large cash outlay to do that, but we, we have a lot of trees on both golf courses. The wind's not very selective, so aesthetically, the wind takes out trees that we, we might not want to lose.
Do you track at all the play, whether it's local or non-resident?
Yeah. Within our point-of-sale system, we have resident fee and we have non-resident fees. That's where that non-resident fee that we pay after the city is coming from.
Is there any feel for how that comparison runs?
From?
From local to non-resident?
Um, you know, I don't, I couldn't give you an exact number. We could look that up and be sure to give that to you.
I'm just curious.
I do know that with our outside play, people that are usually traveling through, maybe they're going to West Yellowstone or something, and they'll stop through here. They may be look at our website and go, hey, this looks like a fun course to play. Here, sometimes they'll stop in Idol Falls. So we'll get some outside play from that. We'll get some outside play from, or participation in our amateur tournaments, because a lot of the guys from, say, Utah, they look at our entry fee and what the opportunity to win, and it's a great deal to come up and play in some of our tournaments. So that's been good. We've had some really good feedback from people from, you know, either Blackwood Idol Falls or down in Utah with the quality of our golf courses and the conditions of our golf courses, comparing their own home courses to ours. They've been very complimentary.
Maureen, I bring that up, I've heard from some other folks involved in sports recreation in our community that Pocatello is becoming a destination facility for those kind of activities. And I'm just curious if it follows through in the golf.
A destination because of the tournaments and stuff like that or just kind of passing through?
Because of the availability of, well, in other activities, the availability of soccer fields and the availability of baseball fields, and people are coming here because we have those and they're open and the, the cost is fairly low.
Well, and that's a big part of it is the cost. You know, you compare us to maybe some of these courses in Utah, and we are significant glass, so it's a nice recreation when you're going on a family vacation or something, stopping by and golfing.
Yeah. We do have quite a few people that will bring their kids to play soccer, in the soccer tournament, and come down and play a round of golf, or come to the rodeo and come down and play a round of golf. The numbers for non-resident would be slightly skewed because chubby residents are not residents of Pocatello, so they pay a slightly higher fee, both for passes and for daily rounds. So, and, and that's a significant number of people, so.
Well, they are not residents, so it'd still be right. They're not a resident of Pocatello, so it would be right still. We have Claudia, and then Chris.
I may have missed it, I don't hear that well. What is the cost of replacing the irrigation infrastructure? Did you say that or no?
I did not say that, and it would just be a guess by me, but it would. John, do you have any insight on that?
I can give a rough estimate.
And are we talking about Riverside or Highland or Riverside?
Well, both. Both eventually, yeah.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director. So the, the oldest infrastructure is at Highland, put in in 87, so 30-plus years, and then Riverside is, you know, 25-plus years. In talking to Greg Baer, the cost is, is going to be at some point substantial, you know, a million or more per course. To get something like that done is kind of what he estimates. With that said, the systems are working well. I think solving the water hammer issue at Riverside has done wonders to help kind of prolong the life of that system, and we'll keep nursing it along, just in managing breaks and keep the system running. But it's just something to get on the radar. They are aging and something to keep in mind.
What, remind me what, what the estimated cost is to replace that clubhouse in Riverside?
Yeah, we, we initially, what do we have that, Larry?
We initially estimated 750,000, I believe.
But we've upped it to a million or more.
Because of cost of materials?
Because of cost of materials, yeah.
And how much? I'm assuming that, that there's, you know, there was, there's been mention of money being saved to that. How much is in that account?
Um, I'd have to confer with, with Jim and the mayor to get a figure on that, an exact figure, but we've been, starting in fiscal year 18, the strategy was to kind of budget capital funds in our operating budget as kind of a savings mechanism and try not to touch them as much as possible, and then stockpile. So you figure a couple of years of, you know, 50-ish thousand per year.
So maybe 150, maybe?
Yeah. There's, there's capital pass-through fees as well. That, I'd have to get with finance.
Yeah, no, I don't need that exact. I'm just, okay.
Chris?
Yeah, my questions are kind of along the same lines. You know, as you may or may not be aware, unless something has changed, Fund 78, it has essentially been drained in order to facilitate the FY '22 budget. So any money that was theoretically accumulated there is no longer there. So, so my question was, where do these accumulated funds reside because they're no longer in, in 78, and, and to what amount? And you've already spoken to that. And then I checked the list of pressing needs that we were given, which, as it was given to us, the non-enterprise total, some of which have been dealt with or will theoretically be dealt with in the FY '22 budget, but that was nearly $9 million, and I'm hearing a minimum of an additional $3 million in important, logical, justifiable needs added to that, which brings us to 11 million anyway. And what disturbs me is that members of the public, as you mentioned, have been paying their due, paying their dues to use the course, and you mentioned, you know, getting a, a plan for addressing these needs. And I absolutely agree with you that the funds that the public has been spending on this course, a portion of those should somehow be being officially set aside with a plan for addressing needs and with a spending plan. And I, it pains me to let you know that, to my knowledge, other than the, the good work that John does within his department, there, there really isn't such a thing. And I, I agree with you that it's very, very important, and I'm hoping that in the very near future, we can begin as a city to put together some of these comprehensive plans so that needs such as the ones you present can be adequately addressed. So thank you for your hard work, and I am sorry to be the messenger who lets you know that Fund 78 is, is no longer at the moment.
I was not aware of that. And we do, the pressing needs at this moment in time, the water, the water system is functioning. We've got a great staff up there that continues to make repairs and replace parts and keep it working. The committee has been working as hard as they can to figure out ways to build a new clubhouse.
Right.
And in some ways, it's a face that we put on the city. When people do come in from out of town, they see these really good municipal golf courses. They're in great shape, they're very playable, challenging, they're good golf courses. But then, as, as most of the council members remember, we had lunch, 20 of us, inside the Riverside Clubhouse.
Right.
It's not good. That building is over 100 years old, and it's, it's not an adequate facility, and it's not a nice face to put on the city.
Right.
They are city property, city golf courses, and it'd be nice to put a decent face. We don't need extravagant.
Right.
We don't need to be country club clubhouses, but, but. We don't need to be country club clubhouses, but something that's adequate and nice.
Yeah, I agree with you, and as I say, I'm sad to say that, you know, we don't have a structure in place currently that I'm aware of that really is focused, as you've mentioned, and I agree with you absolutely in terms of why it's important to have these courses be upgraded, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roger.
How prolific is the water problem on 17? Didn't we build a pond, an extra pond that stored water, and it's overflowing that pond and it's still getting out? And it's been around for years, and the dilemma seems to increase. We don't know where the water comes from, but there seems to be a little bit more of it. Even, is there some out there right now? I haven't been out there in this dry state.
Currently, they've been pumping water out of the upper pond, so we haven't had overflow. Both ponds stay relatively full, but the city is running pumps and running water across the golf course and back into the river, and it's not a very efficient method. We're talking about another pond and then a permanent drainage at the edge of the golf course. There's an area that will hold a lot of water. And then if that isn't sufficient, then it has to be pumped back to the river, which is, there's a weir on the river not very far off the golf course. So water can be delivered there, but that's extensive, and the estimates to run that piping are relatively high, so we're exploring, working with the city engineers, the water department, we're exploring ways to make it a little more manageable. And golf courses pay a lot of money to have water features, a lot of money. This feature hasn't been very, very usable. It is, aesthetically, it's nice, but excess water does a lot of damage, so we have to figure out a permanent solution to it. The last estimate I heard, John, I believe it was about $150,000 to do all of this. So we're looking at possible alternatives right now.
It's at 125.
Well, I really think that's one thing, you know, something that comes and goes like that water problem is something we should be managing because it changes the future of the course based on how much is there or not there, et cetera. And to me, that's something we should be jumping on and taking care of just for the sake of maintaining integrity of the golf course.
Well, I was in favor of a little creek running through the golf course because I can't hit it far enough to get to the creek most of the time anyway. But others were not in favor of that. I mean, it's issues to do that. It raises a lot of maintenance issues.
Any other questions? Larry, thank you, Greg, thank you for everything you do for our community. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number four, is Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee update. Representatives from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, and with us this morning is Judy Taylor, one of our longstanding Parks and Recreation Advisory Board members, and Judy will be taking us through the presentation this morning.
I'm going to make a request. Since I do have respiratory issues, may I take off my mask?
Yes, ma'am.
I am vaccinated, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thanks to the council for the opportunity to present Parks and Rec Advisory Board Annual Fred Belzer is the chairman. Vice Chair is Dave Doran, Kate Corbridge, Rachel Levy, Ally Gory, myself, Tanya Wilkes, Darren Black, Doug Milner, Larry Morton, and David McReddy. And we have a new member, Nicholas Evans, and then our council board liaison is Claudia Also would like to express the thanks on the outgoing term of Darren Black. He's been with the board for several years, and I would like to thank the mayor. My terms were up, and because I'm in a special kind of situation with the historical, you granted me more time, so I thank you very much. General board information. Parks and Rec meets six times a year, February, April, June, August, October, and December. Our meetings are held the first Thursday of these months, and the attendance of our members have been quite excellent. Key projects and issues that the board has been involved in and provided input since our annual presentation last year. Partnership opportunity program and brochures with a goal of identifying park systems, capital projects, and improvements. Developing the brochure which outlines the details of each project, including facility amenities, characteristics, facts, figures, partnership benefits, returns on investments, et cetera. Stat has begun marketing these opportunities with local businesses and individuals, seeking partnerships and donations to accomplish significant park system improvements. In return, they have naming rights and meaningful benefits. We feel that some good momentum has been attained with the successful Connection Credit Union partnership for the Zoo Connections entrance and gift shop building at the zoo, and will serve as a good precedence for other opportunities. New park sign designs for the park system is also a goal, creating a fresh, attractive, compelling park system signs that can better convey the high quality of our city facilities and to replace the current park system signs, which are rather dated and unattractive. In an effort to increase the sharp popularity of pickleball in our community, the board has worked with the Portnife Valley Pickleball Association, who is partnering with Parks and Rec staff to apply for an IFT grant and Forever Idaho grant funding in the effect to acquire resources to convert two of the four existing Raymond Park tennis courts and be dedicated to six pickleball courts, including repairs, resurfacing, restripping, and the netting system and fencing. The board has also provided Parks and Recreation Department operational plans for operational measurements that have been taken place due to the COVID concerns, as well as concerns for the golf course operations and issues as they arise. We also receive quarterly and annual Parks and Rec Department budget expenditures and cost recovery reports, annual service level reports, and department fee resolution and review and input. And at each meeting, the board is also kept well informed of all programs, services, and activities of Parks and Rec. They have provided for the community for the two previous months through comprehension of the director's reports, which continue to include strong levels of participation to city programs and services provided by Parks and Rec even through the COVID challenges. Lastly, one of the significant efforts the board has been heavily involved with is the draft of the master plan for Ross Park. The board has worked with staff and local architect Jackson Land Design and served as the steering committee for developing and fine-tuning recommendations for the plan based on inputs solicited from community members and stakeholders. You might recall this draft plan was presented to council at a work session meeting in November of 2019, where the council was supportive of the plan. COVID unfortunately caused some major reshuffling of priorities and delayed the master plan process. However, the staff is in the process of formulating the offer from FA Engineering to make needed private land adjustments to Lower Ross Park, available for the council preferred lower and upper and lower park area connection roads, which would also provide park access from Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue. Working with landowners, Ireland Park, as well as city engineer staff, Jackson Land Design and ITD, to obtain a small slice of privately owned land adjacent to Fourth Avenue and Filigran Road, which is needed to bring, connecting the Fifth Avenue and Fourth Avenue roads to Upper and Low, excuse me, Upper and Lower Ross Park. Following these last steps, the final plan rendering will be prepared by council direction and brought forth at the appropriate regular city council meeting for a public hearing and potential adoption consideration. This part here is from the Bannock Historical Society and Museum complex up on Upper Ross. They are also doing, they've applied for grants of $2,500 for the Idaho Humanitarian Council under the CARES Act, which completed with the purchase of the equipment needed to help the museum create online content. This will make marketing and sharing our collections and events much easier. IFT Foundation is, let me see, the IFT Foundation for $10,000 is complete, thanks to the vision and hard work of high desert landscaping. The front end is uniquely beautiful and providing to be a draw that we hope. Meetings and events are most, let me see. Okay, they do not meet in the summer, and due to the COVID, there's been a drop-off, but it's coming about. Partnerships with the board and the staff continue to work with Idaho State Historical Society and others to prepare for the Idaho Heritage Conference, which is going to be in Pocatello this fall. It's never been on this side of the state, ever, so it's really going to be quite a Basically, we will be receiving benefits and other participation from museums and state museum. This translates to free admission and discounts to six other museums so far. We hope the program will expand as more museums become aware of this program. Grant tours are hosted in May, and they had 11 schools and homeschools for a total of 500 students this year. The milestones, the Historical Society is 99 years old. They have a new exhibit, excuse me, exhibit, a new teepee was purchased, and it is now outside the fort, and the wagon is outside the fort. They do have some concerns. The museum roof is leaking, and it has been, and they are really concerned with that. Let me see here. As of May, they have had 2,353 total people going through the complex. They are, they have a community garden, and there's about 35 hours is donated to that. Sons of the Revolution, they helped clean up the facility in about 50 hours for that. Handyman, about 60 hours. LDS Missionary Service, 288 hours. Son of Utah Pioneers, 36 hours. Historical Society Board, 150 hours, which comes to 619 hours. This is all volunteer work, and if you paid them at $21 an hour, the city has been saved almost $13,000. There are, you know, we have further interest for donations. We've gotten donations from the Presbyterian Church through the tribes. Lynn does have some questions for the council. Do you want me to do that now? Has there been any further discussion on the marmot issue? The last one they had talked about was they were considering lacing grain with birth control. The marmots are chewing up everything, so that's a huge concern. The other one is the printing of new brochures. They're just about out, and when we have this event coming in September, it will be the, I believe it's the 13th of September, and it goes for a week.
It's 27th to the 30th.
They've changed it?
Yeah.
Okay. I haven't gotten hold of Jackie, so I wasn't sure about that. The cost of the printing so far is like, the change is $75 an update. Anyway, she has a whole list of her costs. The other thing that we are concerned with, and it's the trailhead, the sign, and I think that's going to be covered with our new signs. The thing that is really concerning is at the fort, the catwalk has to be replaced, and the Idaho Heritage Trust has sent in a engineer, and hopefully we can get a grant, but it would be one-on-one matching. So, and last I heard it was going to be about 10,000? And would now possibly more.
Council, just a couple of words to that. So staff is aware of these issues, and we're, we will work with Lynn directly. I don't think council needs to make any calls or decisions on anything. We do have a small kind of nominal budget for Fort Hall repairs. Maybe some of that could be used for grant match to repair the catwalk if we're fortunate enough to be awarded grant funding. So we're aware of these issues, resource-driven for the most part, including the marmots, and we'll be trying our best to take care of them. and we'll be trying our best to take care of those.
Priorities for the upcoming year is to continue working with Parks and Rec staff to make sure that our parks are really the best. Monitoring expenditures and revenues. One of the things, and it's too bad, you can't move the trees from the golf courses because we need them at the parks.
We can put a lot of trees up there.
I know. But anyway, one of the things that's a real priority is to plant some trees in the parks so they can have some shade. Anyway, on behalf of Parks and Rec, again, we would like to thank Mayor Blad and the Council members for your continued support. We are very appreciative of the Council's continued commitments to have allowed Parks and Rec to accomplish what it has been doing in the past year. Advisory boards and staff will continue to work together closely to provide outstanding parks, recreation programs, services, as our department branding indicate, strive to help Pocatello play often and live better. Thank you.
Thank you. John, did you have anything to add?
No, unless there's any Council question.
We've got some questions here. I've got Chris and then Claudia.
First of all, thank you. Thank you for all the work you and your staff that you do. I have a couple of questions. One, just for the public, could you clarify the operational and financial arrangement that exists, at least I believe exists, between the fort and the county?
Yeah. So, oh gosh, Judy, I want to say, what, maybe three years ago, Allen was still here, so maybe three or four years ago. We entered into an agreement with the Bannock County Historical Museum for operation of kind of the Fort Hall facility, and then also the Frontier Village, kind of all of that area up there. And it just made a lot of sense with their museum facility there and being on site. So they, we kind of outsourced the operation of that site and retained ownership and the maintenance of the site. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay, okay, thanks. And then do we have an estimated cost? And I underline estimated because I'm kind of catching you off guard on the roof, potential roof cost, and because I don't believe, unless I'm not seeing it, you know, that IFT made it on here either, and it sounds like an important.
Yeah, it's, that would be fairly minor. I was aware of the catwalk. I wasn't, we've had some leaky roofs up there, and basically we fix them as the need arises. So I'll get with staff and see what the status of this one is. But typically roof repairs, unless you're replacing, geez, the whole thing's leaking, we need to replace the whole thing. They're not terribly costly, so.
I didn't know if it was a leak or the roof is at the end of its useful life. Okay, great. And then IFT, and again, I'm catching you off guard here, but relative to the whole tree removal situation at the golf courses, for a number of years, there's been a real national drive to increase the number of trees in cities because of all the benefits that that creates, cleaning the air, et cetera, et cetera. And so I was wondering, and I just got my Arbor Week Tree Survey, Idaho Tree Survey in the mail yesterday, so I was wondering either perhaps now or at a later date, if we could get some kind of idea about what kind of tree planting project would be appropriate for all of our parks, I guess, because there might be grants available for that, since it has been such a national push now for some years.
So that. If I could interject, that was, we have this thing going on that we're still developing, but it's where we involve the community. Something like that would be, you could have a family say, hey, I'll buy a tree, you guys plant it, they can put their name on it.
Right. And as I say, it might be that they're, I mean, that's the kind of project that frequently there are foundation grants who have ecological concerns and so forth and so on, that, you know, that might be, if we, I mean, if we had a real handle on, you know, how it could be phased, or without spending hours and hours and hours, but just kind of, so. And then finally, I'm really glad for the update on signs, because you and I have talked about the fact that the Friends of the Animal Shelter would really like to increase the visibility, and it seemed that the fort and the zoo also, and so we, as per our last conversation, we are still very interested, the Friends are still very interested in being partners in some kind of group, attractive, modern group sign. So.
Yeah, we've got just a couple of comments. I'll start with the signs. So we've been, oh goodness, I want to say, the last three or four meetings, we've been talking quite a bit about park signage and different designs and visibility standards and all of this. And as of last meeting, which was last week, I think we have a consensus choice or choice on a beautiful new sign design, and we, you know, obviously there's a price tag attached to these, but we would like to get them out at some high profile areas like Constitution Park, or Lower Ross, or these types of areas. And so hopefully you'll see a little movement on that shortly. In regards to trees, I think it's infeasible to think that we could relocate trees from the golf course.
Oh, yeah. I was just talking, I was just finding out why aren't they not relocating?
But planning, we do do that. In fact, we're working in conjunction. I know Rick can speak to this too, with Fort Worth Valley Partners, to obtain some IFT 20,000 and IFT grant funding, and we're going to be doing a tree canopy near the freeway over at Reston Cemetery. The parks have, the park system in general has an awful lot of trees. In fact, so many that we could have a crew of four that do trees all day long, every day, all season, and not get to them all.
A lot of them are the Russian elves, right?
Well, just some, but just big, mature, high quantities of trees. We, the shade that the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I believe, is kind of centering on is more around the playgrounds, and we really support that. There's some kind of irrigation and just space challenges involved. My intent with the partnerships brochure is if we're so fortunate to obtain a partner for new playgrounds, that we include shade structures within those new builds. So you have instant shade instead of maybe some trees that take 15 years to mature. Yeah, so we're well aware, and as resources allow, we'll do what we can.
And so, I mean, this is a public meeting, so I'm assuming you're comfortable if I update the Friends of the Animal Shelter?
Of course.
Because we were, that was one of my assignments, and I pushed it right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Claudia?
John?
Oh, yeah, Claudia, sorry.
John, have you gotten any traction on a partnership for the water slide?
Not at the moment. I've got some feelers out, and I have had some responses about various projects, I guess in respect to negotiations and particular businesses. I'd kind of like to let that evolve a little bit, but not specifically the slide, but I remain hopeful because I think that slide provides probably the highest return on investment of any project.
Yeah. So two things. What would it cost to take that slide down? I mean, in my head, I picture the slide is gone, but there's a cordoned off area with a nice big banner that says, "New attraction, coming soon, soon as whenever." But you know what I mean, as opposed to the dilapidated slide that nobody can use? So what would you think it would cost to take the slide down?
Boy, I am not sure. Jeff, any estimates? I would think it would be something we could accomplish in-house, so hopefully not too terribly expensive, but.
If you were to ballpark it, your contract, did I use any 20 grand?
It's a contract now?
In-house, probably, you know, less, but it's just a matter of, you know, time and resources.
Could you sell tickets for attendance?
Just wondering about a well-focused win.
The other thing is, when it comes to partnership for the slide in particular, do you think, it seems to me that if we come with our handout and we don't have any skin in the game, that it's harder to get somebody to put money in. So I'm wondering, do you think that if we committed X amount of dollars, that then that would make it easier for partners to say, yeah, we'll match that, or, you know what I mean? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, possibly. As I mentioned, I really believe, because of the number of participant occurrences that we run through there, and kind of how it caters to maybe certain businesses and exposure with kind of young families and things, I think, my gut tells me that there is enough return on investment, that I think as the partnerships program evolves, and I can get this information in front of decision makers, I'm very hopeful that we won't have to do that. But if we have someone that's interested, and maybe they can't quite or don't want to come up with the full amount, I think those negotiations and discussions with Council would be appropriate to take place, but.
Because I think the water slide, I mean, we need to do something with that.
I agree.
If nothing else, we need to take it down.
You know, the timeframe, you know, we're into probably next year, even if we had money on a construction schedule, I would like to be, or I'd love to be, I guess, provided the opportunity to kind of chase it a little bit longer. I think we just got these, this program kind of out and running. I am getting some feelers, and I remain hopeful because that, I think that whoever we can get to partner on that project, they're going to get a ton of return on investment.
And maybe multiple partners, right?
Could be.
I mean, it doesn't necessarily just have to be one entity. It could be, you know, okay. All right, thank you.
And that may, I guess, negate the need for the city to contribute if you have two partners coming in.
Right. And I don't know how they would share benefits, but that's, that's why. You have your job, and I don't. Anyway, go ahead.
Thank you. We've got Linda and then Chris.
So I wanted to thank you for all that you're doing. I'm also excited to see, hopefully we can work something out about the slide soon too. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to mention the conference, and I mean, I thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to put a plug in. I'm on the committee with Jackie that is organizing the Idaho Heritage Conference, and I just want everybody to sort of save the dates. It's September 27th to the 30th. Most of it will be happening at ISU, but there's also tours planned all around town. There'll be a dinner out at Fort Hall, there'll be a dinner at the museum, the Bannock County Historical Museum. There's a whole list of events. The website with all the information where you can register and find out everything that's going on is idahosheritageconference.org. There's an S in there, so idahosheritageconference.org. And you can register through that, you can find out all the planned programs and events. The cost for the whole thing is $89, so it's a steal. And there's really good speakers lined up, and as you mentioned, this is just an incredible honor for Pocatello to have gotten, and thanks to Jackie Albert for that, because she applied for it and convinced them to bring it here. And it's a great way for us to highlight our city. So I encourage everybody to participate in that, come to that, save those dates. And if anyone's listening and wants to help sponsor that conference, we're still looking for additional sponsors too. So there's opportunities there as well.
This heritage is also, how many tribes has Jackie pulled together?
Oh, yeah, yes.
It's not just our tribes here. I think she's got like five working together, which is unheard of. And it's going to be geared to the Indians. It's the heritage that they brought, not the trains, not the trappers, but, and so it's going to be a lot of the native foods and that type of thing, so.
And there is a dinner at Fort Hall. We've been partnering with the Shoshone Bannock tribes to have events out there as well, and some really good historic tours, information all about the architect Frank Paradise, who did a lot of our buildings. It's a way for us to highlight the Brady Chapel in particular, which is a Paradise building, and we're also raising money. The Historic Preservation Commission has kicked off a capital campaign for the Brady Chapel. So all these things are coming together in a way to really highlight and support the city of Pocatello.
If you haven't been up to that complex, it's a gem. It's an absolute gem. There's so much up there, it's just remarkable. I'm not from this area, and I was just blown away.
I'm in a jet too. I was just flipping through the conference site. Several of those tours have very limited participation, some as small as 25.
Yeah, so sign on Berlin.
You need to get in now.
Sounds good. Chris?
John, could you just clarify or summarize where you are relative to taking down the slide? Because it is, I was over in the Ross Park area the other day, and it, you know, it's kind of a sad statement, right? But I'm just wondering if you could summarize that, you know, taking that down relative to your request to have more time to chase the replacement, just, you know, for me, just so I kind of know.
Sure. Yeah, we're spread a bit thin at the moment. We have park staff that's building the new zoo entrance building with in-house labor. We did not have a defined plan to take that structure down at this moment. If that's a council desire, we certainly can kind of, you know, try to rally the troops internal and see if it's feasible that we can do it in-house. Otherwise, maybe work with, you know, Jeff and Marilyn, engineering folks, to get an outside contractor to come in if that's the council's priority. It's just, it's resource driven.
Yeah, just asking, and I don't know, Jeff, what if any structural issues are there? I mean, it's my impression that the longer rusting metal sands has rusted further, that at a certain point it becomes a good idea to do something about it.
Sure. It's been several, it's been a couple of years since I've been out there, and it's like, I can't really speak to it.
The integrity's fine. It's the inside of the stair tower that is just crumbling and no longer safe. The slide itself, we did some major, I guess, stabilizing. Jeff, it feels like a 17, maybe, somewhere around there?
Probably about that, yeah, 17 or 18.
And, boy, that thing is solid. And the staircase itself is solid. It's the internal of the staircase.
So one of our 50 mile an hour wind events is not major in the public or our facility in any way?
No. It's the staircase inside that tower.
Great, thank you.
Roger?
I got it. The museum, is it city property or county property?
The museum itself is county, but then adjacent to that, the Fort Hall and those areas, that's city property.
So if the roof needs replaced on the museum, is that our issue or is that their issue?
Well, that would be their issue on the museum, but they're talking about the roof and the Fort Hall structure, one of the buildings.
I thought I heard museum.
I thought, that's what I thought too.
Couple of other things. The, if I remember right, the connector had some trees that we moved, and I thought we retain ownership of those trees, or found a loan to somebody out there if we don't ask for them. And some of those trees would be a good start because they're, you know, it'd be hard to but it might be cheaper to pay somebody moving for us than to go find that size of tree or take time. So just that little issue.
We, I think we've already used a good number of those. I thought they were on private homeowner's lands and I can't remember the name of the homeowner, but.
I just remember the distant conversation about it, but it wouldn't hurt us to see what might still be available.
What's left, yeah.
Second thing is, has the arts department ever considered, you know, we plant flowers and annuals and everything else, we ever thought about planting trees so that we grow them ourselves, have a little nursery so that we can replace? Surely with all the hundreds of acres of land we've got, someplace we could plant trees via our own sprinkler system with minimal care, but then we could harvest them for replacement golf courses or parks or things like this, so.
That's a good idea. We haven't, that hasn't been a conscious thought of ours. I think we've, we've kind of got our hands full with our existing duties. I think that's the main reason. It's just resource driven to kind of accomplish something like that. But that's a good idea.
Well, and the reason I bring that, because there are giveaways of trees all the time, but they're like this tall. And, you know, it takes a while to get them up to where they're a tree that you really want to transplant yourself. So if we just had like a, even a community garden for trees and we've got some of the people to do something like that, it would help us to take the giveaway trees, get them up to a certain size that we can distribute them in the city. So that's, that's one thing there. Let's see if I got some there. Oh, final, this has been a long run out report. Rick was talking about people coming into town. Pickleball was one of the things, somebody talked to me. I know somebody that drives in 20 miles or more several times a week to play pickleball in Pocatello. And when they are here, they go out to lunch with friends and stuff like that. I don't even really know what pickleball is. Back to the mech. But, but there, it's evidently something that people use as a form of activity and exercise and they enjoy it. And I bet you they're spending a lot more money in the community than they are for the resource of pickleball.
I got cornered by somebody who was just determined.
Rick?
Pocatello Partners has embarked on a campaign, the Challenge of Trees grant that's going out across the country and we're getting involved in that. It's going to involve participation with the city down the road once the plans finally develop. One of the things that we've talked about is exactly what she just said, Roger, is a nursery to produce trees that could be used throughout our community, whether it's through parks and rec, wherever it might be, or even in the community. In McCammon, yeah, McCammon, there's a fellow down there who is named Joe Foster. He's heavily involved with the National Wild Turkey Federation. Joe has set up a nursery in his own piece of property at one of the canyons. And what he's discovered, he plants trees to encourage turkeys. They're mass producing trees. But he's discovered it takes about three years to take a tree, put it in the ground and let it acclimate to our climate and grow up to a height that it can be transplanted somewhere and survive. But he's, he has about 3,000 trees planted on one acre. And it's intense. He has to water them, he takes care of them every day and he has to keep the turkeys out in his, in his own property and the deer away from them. But it's been incredibly successful for transplanting those trees. The city of Boise is heavily involved in the City of Trees Challenge and I sat in on a Zoom conference call with them about six weeks ago. And this thing's going to go nationwide, all the way from Nebraska to Boise and on into Oregon and Washington. And we're trying, as PPP is trying to get involved in that program. What they're discovering, it costs about $5 to transplant a tree into the forest area. It costs about $400 to put a tree in a city and make it survive the way it should. And they've got a specific list of kinds of trees and that whole thing, but it's something we're working on through Jed Dallas, PPP's current president. He's initiated what he calls the Tree Arbor Decade. And our goal is to transplant 100,000 trees over the next 10 years in our community. Boise's done a study and Hatta has much of the results comparable information for our community. But they looked at tree canopy coverage in the city of Boise and found it reduces temperatures in a neighborhood up to five degrees. It provides a calming atmosphere and it provides health benefits. When they looked at the health risks of persons in non-canopied areas versus canopyed areas, they found much less health problems in those canopyed areas. So the benefits can be tremendous to a community.
I'd just say, one of our more street areas is our cemetery, so I don't know.
That's what we have a concern about, rest lawn. Tom and I were out looking at a rest lawn a month ago, I guess, and that's going to be needed probably in the next eight to 10 years and that is frankly, it's a desert out there.
But the people there don't have health problems?
Yeah, no. And that's been one of my things is rest lawn cemetery with the downshifting on that hill and stuff, it's hard to have the fungus out there at the graveside because it just does not, and trees are not just a shape factor, but they are a sound factor too. And so I really applaud the effort to get some trees out there at rest.
Matt would be is one of the most, I think, just a gem of this city. It's one of the most beautiful spots in town visually and just the atmosphere, absolutely.
Except for the road, Jeff, right?
Except the, yes. Marmots, but it's gorgeous. Shady side trailhead, you know, coming off of Taysom and going into shade is also for that same reason, just the trees and the shade. It's such a nice little area right through there.
Sure. Roger?
I was just going to say, the marmots are an issue that somehow we've got to make it a collective issue because we're hearing about it in so many different segments. We have to find a way through fish and game or something to make that a citywide issue that we can take care of. I've heard of some responses and trapping and carrying them out by some people. You know, there's a lot of responses, but we're going to have to get a uniform response to it because they're everywhere anymore.
Are they released?
The thing with marmots is they're territorial. So you take them out, you're going to have another group come back in, so.
That's why it's going to be collecting.
You know, that's why sterilization, you know, because then they can stay there, but they're not going to reproduce.
TNR for marmots is what he is saying.
What's the predator? What preys on marmots?
Cats.
Coyotes.
Not lions?
Yeah.
Not cats?
I mean, they.
I think they're living for cat.
No, I've seen marmots that are bigger than my little dog.
I would say that birds, the big territorial birds can do it, but it's when they're a certain size.
But I mean, they, in this city, they do have programs where they're taking feral cats, giving them spade neuter, putting them back where they were, so we don't have the rodent issue. So, you know.
I think the, what I've heard is that if you go through the process, you could trap a marmot and there are designated areas they can be released in where they'll never make it back here.
Tom has become an expert on marmots.
Well, we're probably not going to fix the marmot problem today, so I think it's a good discussion and I agree, we need to make it a citywide thing so that we can actually see a decrease in marmots if that's possible. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
We will move to agenda item five is Fire Union Quarterly Update. Members of the Pocatello Fire Union will give council an update of their activities for the past quarter.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Andy Moldenhauer, Pocatello Firefighters, Local 187. Adam's on shift today and Scott wasn't able to be here, so I'm the only one you're getting. Anyway, this, this year's been pretty busy. It seems like we've had an uptick in calls. It seems like call volume's been returning and recently we've seen an uptick in COVID calls, which is kind of mirroring the national trend with COVID cases going up. Obviously that changes our response a little bit, but we've had a little bit of experience over the last year and a half in responding to COVID. We just concluded negotiations. I think we have an agreement that it's going to work well for both sides. We're currently working with city staff to try to get all the tentative agreements into the text of the CBA and hopefully we've got a working document before you guys and us shortly so that we can both review it and ratify them. With COVID, our philanthropic efforts have been a little bit more difficult, but upcoming we have our annual breast cancer awareness month in October. We have a working draft for what our shirts will be this year and if you guys would like to see it, I can forward that to you. If anybody has interest in purchasing one of those shirts, then let us know. You've always done two, we do one. So if anybody wants one, then let us know and we will get you, we'll put you on the list.
Are you going to do masks again?
You know, they didn't go over that well, but I think it was more of a quality issue. So, so we may revisit it, but we, obviously there's a lot more mask manufacturers and options this year, so maybe we can narrow it down and get to one that's, that's got a little better quality and we'll see.
Andy, do you know the date in October that?
So, so we wear those pink shirts on Friday and Saturdays, or Fridays and Saturdays throughout the entire month of October. We use that as our uniform shirt for the entire month. And so we'll have the, we'll have all the shirts screen printed and ready to go right before the month starts and usually we, usually we kick it off with the break for breakfast event that the hospital does. Last year we didn't participate because we didn't know whether they were going to be doing it up until the very last. And, but, but we should have them available end of September. And, and then like I said, we wear them Fridays and Saturdays throughout the month. And the proceeds that we have from selling those, we donate to the Department of Cancer Center to assist with breast cancer patients that need a little bit of monetary assistance. This year we lost our MDA fill the boot coordinator. He ended up leaving the department and so we've had a little bit of a difficulty identifying a new coordinator, but I think we've got a guy that's willing to do it. And we're a little bit behind the eight ball as far as setting that up and getting fill the boot off the ground this year. But we will probably be before the council again before too long because we need to get, we need to get permission to be able to use an intersection. And so kind of bear with us and we'll, as soon as we get that coordinator identified and get a date set, then we will be back here. And hopefully, and we're looking forward to doing that. We weren't able to do it last year. Then lastly, we're going to be doing our annual coats for kids campaign. Currently we're in the fundraising aspect of that and so we've got a great coordinator that, that does that for us every year and he's working with a lot of businesses to help generate funds for that. And of course, as a local, we donate some, some too. And then when school starts back up, then we work with the, with the school counselors and with the school district to identify where the need is and then, and then deliver those coats.
When did you say that, when's that coming up?
The coats for kids? So, so right now we're just in the fundraising aspect of that. You know, it takes a little while for, for, once the kids get back into school to be able to identify where the need is. And, and you know, obviously our efforts are always to get the coats out before they need them. So, so we kind of target that October and November timeframe, but, but depending on, I mean, once we know how many coats we're going to be getting, then we also have to get them ordered and get them shipped. And in the past, we've actually worked with a manufacturer within the states and, and they custom made the coats and so there was a little bit of a turnaround time with that. But typically our effort is to try to get them before the kids need them. So, otherwise, you know, I mean, I think I'll probably see it before we get too far into the holiday season, but, but we end up having a lot going on over the holiday season between donations for Thanksgiving and for Christmas and that type items, so.
Are we planning on doing the stair run again this year?
Well, so, so the Seattle stair climb typically happens in like April, May. And the, the signup for that usually starts in, I'm wanting to say somewhere in February. This year, they, well, COVID hit last year right before that event, so they canceled it last minute. This year what they did is instead of actually holding the event in Seattle, they, they did remote. So like, so like Jordan Peterson, who's one of our guys that's done it year after year after year, went and did it in, in the Holterina. And then, and then he also actually partnered with some firefighters in Boise and they went over and, and did some stair climbs in one of their public parks that has a lot of, that has a lot of uphill. And so, so this last, the last couple of years have been really challenging with that. The money has, the fundraising has still happened and, and we've been able to help the leukemia and lymphoma society. But, but actually holding the physical event hasn't happened. I think they're probably looking forward to being able to do it next year, provided that we can turn the corner on COVID.
Sure. Thank you. Roger?
I want to thank the fire department because yesterday, what I was told by a couple of firemen is that that department leads our city in our United Way camp, campaign contributions. As a department, they step forward more than anybody else. And I think some accolades need to go to fire for that generosity.
Thank you for that. We, we take United Ways fairly seriously and we've had a good coordinator in James Perry in that and, and our, our guys are, are good about sharing and helping the community.
I just wanted to thank you for that too. I mean specifically for the union and the work you do in the community. I mean, the work you do obviously for your own members, but there's just so much good that you do in the community and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I mean, I saw Heather nodding her head. I, I don't want to misspeak, but I do think that the fire department raises about, is it about two thirds of the overall for the city?
I think that's pretty close, the last time I saw the numbers.
Yeah.
I think annually it usually is about that, then.
Good job.
So you mentioned one thing, I'll just say, you mentioned the uptick in calls. I met with Chief Gates the other day and he keeps a running total and we are absolutely this year at more calls than we've ever had to date. And so you're, you're right, we definitely have had an uptick and we're not sure. I've asked him to try to figure out what's going on and why we have so many, but we've got, there has been a lot of calls and so you've done, the department's done a great
job. I think everybody's just had a little bit of cabin fever. Last year we kind of expected there to be an increase in calls with COVID going on, but in reality what happened is a lot of people stayed home. And so you didn't have, you didn't have the recreational injuries and stuff like that that you normally would have because people were, there were less cars on the streets. There were less cars on the freeway, there were less accidents and that type of stuff. Even though there was an increase in the, in the disease-related calls, you know, there were also people that, that we regularly transport that wanted to stay away from the hospital because they didn't want to get sick. And, and so, so last year they kind of went down and I think now everybody after being cooped up for a year, they're just really wanting to get on with normal life and so there's been a lot more activity and I think that's probably led to that.
There's probably some truth to that.
Is it all types of calls that are going up or is it one specific type of call?
You know, I mean, that's a better answer, that's a better question for the chief. I, what I've seen is just an overall increase.
Ambulances or fire reports?
Well, the chief's right here, I think he'll help me out.
Chief Gates, Pocatello Fire Department. I don't have that off the top of my head. I kind of look at the most, I would say that they're all going up a little bit. Fire calls are a little bit up, but a lot of those call types are super variable, meaning that there's not a specific driver to that. EMS calls obviously are probably are, they're 83% of all of our call volume, so therefore, you know, those are always the driver. What the mayor spoke to is that last month we hit 811 calls in July. That's the highest month we've ever had. We've never had calls and right now we're on track. Our last largest year was 2017. We hit 8,000, I want to say 211 calls and we're on track to hit that again this year, which will be the first time we've had a decline for the last three years, so. We'd had a decline for the last three years, so.
Kind of speaks to the variability of it. I agree with President Moldenhauer that I think we have a little case of cabin fever where people are outdoing a lot more than they have in the past, just because of wanting to get out.
We've got an intersection of pent-up demand, too, because a lot of people weren't doing things, and consequently, their health has declined, and so it creates more calls. The other thing is, we've never experienced heat like this in Polk-Tel, so you've got people trying to be more active on top of the heat, so it's just a kind of a perfect storm.
Okay, thank you. Andy, thank you very much. Thank the union members for all that they do for their community. It's a lot more than respond to calls.
Overall, thanks for your time.
Appreciate it, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move to agenda item number six. It's fiscal year 2022 budget discussion. Finance staff will review public comments and council discussion from the August 5, 2021 budget hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion. I move that we put the Polk-Tel Fire Department ladder truck back into the budget to be paid through an annual $104,000 lease, with an additional $104,000 set aside to build a fund in anticipation of the next new truck needed. The necessary funds will be covered from the nearly $1 million available through employee compensation reductions not requiring job cuts, rather than an additional tax ask or additional department budget cuts. I further move that we lead by example in these difficult financial times, stand shoulder to shoulder with our staff, who are anxious about the potential, probably not this year, but perhaps in the future, of job cuts, and we roll back the mayor and council raises instituted in 2020 to the 2019 levels, and reduce council benefits by 50%. Additionally, I move that we remove the $939,000, 3% tax ask, or whatever remains of it, previously included in the budget with discussion that it would not be used. I believe this money, or what's left of it, currently resides in streets, but I'm a little unclear, particularly after the adopted motion yesterday. Finally, I move that we add an additional $229,000 from the nearly $1 million available through employee compensation reductions not requiring job cuts, to Mr. Cheatham's already adopted 671,000 budget cut and 200,000 non-tax ask revenue addition, to bring the budget reduction to a full $1 million. I move this because department discussion is already indicating that some departments cannot reduce their budgets further without cutting jobs. As some departments struggle to make cuts without cutting jobs, other departments may have to shoulder a greater reduction burden. This situation could potentially result in a rippling job loss effect. Fiduciary responsibility resides with council. I believe this council needs to shoulder our responsibility to create the FY22 budget. We can work with departmental input directly without intermediaries. The public deserves a fully transparent and public budget process. Further erosion of council authority and duty is not advisable at this time. Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Chris Stevens and a second by Claudia Ortega. Discussion?
One of the things I will say is, I do not, I really applaud the reduction that Rick suggested yesterday, in fact, that went. The trouble I'm having is how it's quantified, because I think it's our duty as the fiduciary officers to do that determination. I think we receive recommendations to us, but to have it arbitrarily out there without us really formally approving the detail of the concept, I don't think that's appropriate for our role as fiduciary officers. I think it's one thing to say, bring it to us, but I think we've got to approve it before it goes, grant, and everything else.
You know, when I suggested that yesterday, made the motion, it was after sitting down with one department and looking at a number of their line items in their budgets. The suggestion I had did not touch salaries at all, any benefits at all to any personnel of the staff. Those cuts, I don't think we can make. I think that's micromanaging the city, and that's a responsibility of administration, not the legislative quasi-judicial branch. And to begin to take that kind of action is stepping way beyond what we should be doing as council members. That responsibility relies with the mayor and the department head, so they can go back and look at each of their individual line items and see if maybe there is a little fat. It isn't a great reduction, it's about a 1.5% roughly, of the total general fund is all we're looking at. And beyond that, I think we've way overstepped our boundaries.
Go ahead, Claudia, then Roger. Claudia, then Roger. Thank you.
Well, here's my question. Here's my question. Last year, departments cut 2.5% off their operating budgets, and we got nowhere near this number. So how can you say that they can reduce their operating expense and get to this number? I'm not, it doesn't make sense.
I think it can be done. I went through the line items.
But we couldn't do it last year, so what makes you think they can do it this year? I mean, that's a valid question.
Because I have gone through, line by line, and everything in the general fund, and came up with, and I'm not going to say that what I've identified are exactly where the cuts and the need to come from, because I didn't have a chance in every department to look at a three- or four-year history of expenditures. I only looked at one department, and in that particular department, we easily found $20,000. Some departments can't cut. There were some budgets that I looked at that it doesn't look like there's a nickel left. That budget was pared down to the bone.
Right.
There are others that look, on the surface, like there might be a little extra padding just in case, and that's the way I use the budget. So I think each department head needs to go back and just take a look at those particular items in their entire bus, each line item, and say, yeah, I haven't spent that much. One of the things I discovered was that most of the budgets have been greatly expanded to cover water expenses, to cover sanitation, to cover electricity and natural gas. To the best of my knowledge, none of those are going to increase beyond, now, we had a light winter this past year, and we may have a worse winter, and may take a little more natural gas. But there have been a number of departments that have had improvements in lighting, and they've reduced their costs, but they've maintained that same light item for several years, at the higher figure. And I think it's there.
Okay, so I have another question for you. What department did you specifically focus on?
The airport.
The airport.
I had an airport commission meeting Tuesday.
Okay, so...
After that meeting, we sat down and went through several of their line items, and it was a pretty easy 20 grand.
Okay, so if the airport can trim 20,000, I'm not understanding how we're going to get to $671,000. I mean, if you had said to me, well, the airport trimmed $120,000 in 20 minutes, well, then that's a different story. But if every department can only trim $20,000, and some can't trim, because last year, we had departments who came in and they were bare bones as it was, and we asked them for 2.5%, and they were able to cut $1,100. So I'm just not understanding how it is that you think cutting operational budgets is going to get us to $671,000. And additionally, the responsibility of the budget lies with the council. Every department head and the mayor operate within the context of the budget the council sets. The council is responsible for setting the budget. That's our responsibility. It's nobody else's. So if reductions have to be made, recommendations come from department heads, because they know their department, but those decisions lie with the council.
Roger.
Well, I was just going to say, I disagree with you, Rick. I think some of this council have abdicated their responsibility, and previous council members have held with high regard in fiduciary duties. And I don't think that they would ever have abdicated their responsibilities as fiduciary officer and pushed it off on somebody else to manage. This council, in my history, has always tried to be the first-line fiduciary officers for this city. It's changed in the last couple of years, but I can go back a lot of years and say it's never been that way. And if you go back even further, you'll find that Ron Fraser had the council going through that whole docket, line item by line item. So, you know, I just cannot go with the idea that we're going to conscript reductions to somebody else without ever reviewing them and having them tangibly put before us.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes. I would just make the point that reducing budget available for employee compensation by reducing, and I know the word attrition was not well-received by you yesterday, Mr. Mayor, but I don't have a better word, but reducing the amount of money available for employee compensation is not micromanaging, because those jobs currently have no people in them. I understand that they are assigned to a department, but my proposal does not say that I'm going to tell Department X that, you know, that this unfilled position, no. That is up to departments. But what I am suggesting is that, in a budgetary sense, which is our job, we reduce the amount of money available for future hiring, and that is not micromanaging in any way. I also believe that by putting this burden on departments, when we don't know whether or not ultimately job cuts will be required, I have no interest in putting our department heads in an untenable situation relative to their staff, because they are either actually having to have discussions about whether or not the only way they can help us get to this 671 is by making cuts. That's going to increase anxiety, it's going to create consternation at the departmental level, and I believe that we, the council, need to be the people who take that uncomfortable situation off our department heads. I am not willing to put them in that situation.
Okay. Linda?
It's hard to even know where to begin, but I'm going to keep it really short. I just want to make one thing absolutely clear, and the only reason why I was willing to second your motion and go along with that is because it does not go after employees at all. There is nothing in there about employee wages, employee benefits, positions. It is absolutely about looking at departmental operational budgets. And yes, that is a tough thing to do. I will say one other thing. Last year, your first budget session, the very first proposal was 10% across the board, departments figure it out. So the idea that you would never do that is simply not true, and that's all I'm going to say.
Okay, number one, that wasn't the proposal.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't. The proposal was...
Hold on, just a minute.
Okay, you spoke.
Just a minute, I got Chris.
Thank you. So the proposal last year was actually, could we see what it would look like? Period, the end. Period, the end. I made the proposal, and I know what I said. I know what I said. And I wanted to know what it would look like. The pushback from some council members was, that's your decision, you need to figure that out. I countered with the fact that it seemed unwise and even a bit arrogant for me to try to tell a department on that level what precisely it might look like. And therefore, I wanted to leave that decision to the departments. However, we are actually here to discuss the FY22 budget, and my suggestion for us as a council is that we remain focused on the FY22 budget, because water under the bridge is water under.
Thank you. Heidi?
Mr. Mayor, one thing that I think the public made clear at our budget hearing was that they were tired of fighting and arguing, so with that, I'd like to call for a vote on the motion.
Okay. It's been called for a vote, so we have a motion on the floor. A motion was by Stevens and a second by Ortega.
And may I remind, since there are three components, or does everybody clearly remember them?
Does everybody remember?
So it's the fire truck, the rollbacks of council and mayor raises and council benefits, and then the proposal to increase by $229,000, the Mr. Cheatham's proposal of 671.
Okay. Claudia, would you please call the room?
Stevens?
Oh, yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Flory?
No.
Vlad?
No.
I have another motion. I move that we put the Polk-Tel Fire Department ladder truck back into the budget to be paid through an annual $104,000 lease, with an additional $104,000 set aside to build a fund in anticipation of the next new truck needed. The necessary funds will be covered from the nearly $1 million available through employee compensation reductions not requiring job cuts, rather than an additional tax ask or additional departmental budget cuts. I further move that we lead by example in these difficult financial times by rolling back...
Just saying, Wilson.
It's not because I'm not going to...
Let Chris finish her motion.
Yeah, I'm not going to include a certain part, so it is actually structurally different. By rolling back the mayor and council raises instituted in 2020 to the 2019 levels and reduce council benefits by 50%.
Second.
We have a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega. Discussion? Claudia, would you please call the room?
Steen?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
No.
Ray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Flory?
No.
I have another motion.
Just a minute.
Sorry?
No.
I have another motion. I move that we put the Polk-Tel Fire Department ladder truck back into the budget to be paid through an annual $104,000 lease, with an additional $104,000 set aside to build a fund in anticipation of the next new truck needed. The necessary funds will be covered from the nearly $1 million available through employee compensation reductions not requiring job cuts, rather than an additional tax ask or additional departmental cuts. I believe, based on the fact that this truck was put on this list... I believe, based on the fact that this truck was put on this list and based on conversations with the fire department mechanic and several members of the fire department, that this is an important need, and it involves our number-one duty as government, which is providing for the health and welfare and public safety of our community.
Second thought.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like the chief, how long would it just come up? I need to have perspective a little bit. If we were to put this in the budget so we could order it, it'd be a year probably, if it's like a lot of stuff.
At least a year, yes.
And this truck is already at its end of life now, is what I understand?
Yeah, 2022, it's at its end of life, yes.
End of life, so we would be getting it in just in time to, I don't know that we can push this down the road, because what I'm hearing from the fire department mechanic and others is that you've got to replace it after 10 years or whatever, and it goes into reserve, and that's just where the industry says we've got to be.
The industry says 10 to 12 and out at 25. So basically, we're kind of going at 12 and 24 is kind of what I've built all of our capital on, is 12 years frontline and then 12 more years in a reserve status.
And this truck is how old?
I don't remember off the top of my head. Do you remember, Ron?
The tower truck?
The ladder.
The ladder is a 2012.
2012.
Okay.
So it's at the point where we could go another year or two, but it is nearing its life. Like I said, it's 10 to 12.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Connie, could you please call the room?
Is that a second?
I'm sorry. It was a motion by Stevens and a second by Ortega.
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Adamson?
I think it's a good idea to look at that in future years' budgets, and I know the chief will bring that up to us, but I'm not comfortable with the assumption that that could be done solely through employee attrition, so no.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
No.
Glad?
So I'll just say, I'm not comfortable removing a million dollars out of employees. That means we are reducing and we are laying or taking people out of work here.
No, it's not a million dollars.
I am not comfortable doing so regardless if it's $10, so the answer is no.
And she said specifically without cutting jobs.
The answer is no.
Well, it could still be your answer, but you need to understand the words that are being said.
It's very, very clear, removing a million, removing it from employee compensation.
So let me, for the record, simply make it clear that my motion relative to the ladder truck proposed an annual $104,000.
I understand what the motion was.
That's fine. I'm just doing this for the benefit of the public, and that it did not in any way cost $1 million, nor did it in any way result in a job cut. So I just want to be clear so the public understands what my motion actually was.
Okay, thank you. Heidi?
So unfortunately, council member Ortega had to leave our meeting yesterday, and so I was just curious if you had had a chance to email those items that you wanted to discuss yesterday to the staff, or if you had those printed out that you could provide with us today so that we could know.
Actually, her motion covered my item. That's why I seconded it for motion.
Okay, well, that was the reason why we wanted to continue this meeting after having a motion to prepare the ordinance yesterday, so with that, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. I don't typically take a motion to adjourn, but we'll take it. With that, Connie, could you please call the room?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
With the caveat that I am very, very uncomfortable with the obscurity of our budgeting process this year. Yes, I vote to adjourn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for attending today, then. Staff, you and I have some work to do, so we'll be meeting again a little bit later today to start that process. Thank you very much for being with us today. We are adjourned.